For the Bossier City Council meeting, June 15th, 2021, we'll have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Larkin's not here.
Mr. Harvey?
I do it.
Mr. Harvey? Please bow your heads.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us and for all the blessings that you've bestowed on Bossier City. All we want to pray for our city clerk's mother, Phyllis's mother has an illness. We pray, Lord, that you give her good health and her doctor's wisdom and peace in their family and a quick recovery, Lord. But we want to thank you for the progress that's been made with the COVID virus and pray for continued progress and a normal return of our economies and worlds. And we pray, Lord, for wisdom for our nation and for our state and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin, absent. Mr. Irwin? Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
In accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and Bossier City Council Resolution adopted January 21st, 2020, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on that particular item. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you're asked to please step out of the meeting. City council-appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of June 1st, 2021, regular meeting in defense with reading?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
No additions today?
No, sir.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, we have a ceremonial matter?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Larkin, welcome. We'll count you as down now. Oh, sure. Let the record show Mr. Larkin's here.
Yes, sir.
Guys, it really is an honor and a privilege to be doing this today. I know we all know about this, but we wanted to give them something, you know, something, a small token of our appreciation and the citizens of Bossier. We got, uh... Last name Leslie? Mr. Leslie and Corporal Bragg with the Bossier Police Department. And Officer Bailey's not here today. But anyway, I just, I know you've heard about it. I just want to read some of this, what happened. On June 1st, 2021, at approximately 12:41 hours, the Bossier City Police Department received a call from Shreveport in reference to a white female wearing dark clothing walking in traffic on top of the Shreveport Barstow Bridge. Officer Matthew Bragg was the first responding officer to arrive on the scene and observe the female matching the description walking eastbound carrying a large bag. Upon making an attempt to make contact, the female checked her well, to check her well-being, the female climbed over the bridge railing hanging her feet on the side of the Red River. During this time, Officer Bragg made attempts to communicate with the female, informing her that he was there to help. The subject at that time became very agitated, was crying, and appeared to be very upset. She then started taking off her shoes and positioning herself to jump off the bridge. Without caring for his own safety, Officer Bragg jumped in, jumped immediately into action, ran over to the female, wrapped his arms around her to prevent her from jumping over the bridge. Officer Bragg held on to the female, not letting go until the second responding officer, that's Brandon Bailey, arrived on scene. Officer Bragg and Officer Bailey in a heroic display of bravery risking their lives to prevent a subject who clearly was going through a mental crisis from jumping over the bridge. As both officers were struggling with this subject who was fighting with them, still trying to jump approximately 200 feet below in the swift-moving river, both officers were assisted by Good Samaritan Raulus Leslie, who also risking his own safety, helping Officers Bragg and Bailey in securing the female subject, pulling her over the concrete railing and brought her to safety. So anyway, we wanted to show just a brief appreciation for the Bossier City Council. For Mr. Raulz, you may see, we put the Bossier City Police crest on here because you assisted two police officers in saving this woman's life. And we want to, we want to thank you for that and give you this little momentum.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And also, of course, Corporal Bragg, one of our own.
Corporal Bragg.
Hey, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Want you to get a picture with his wife in?
Yeah.
Good thought, Jeff.
Marriage coming too.
David, we ain't done, not done yet. What'd you run off on?
I asked if we were good.
You want to give that to him?
The empty box. Go on.
I don't have my glasses. Are these reader?
Yeah. Yeah. Tim, Scott, and Tommy, come on down here, would you please, please, sir?
No. But you dedicated a number of years to the people of Bossier City, and that's what we're here to recognize, so... All right, I'm going to read, this is for all three of our outgoing councilmen, that we certainly thank you for your years of service and dedication to the people of Bossier City, and I know they appreciate it as well. Yeah, on each of these plaques, do we need to, I was just going to show the guys. This is to the... But it reads to each three of you, presented in, oh, I'm sorry, there are differences. So, Mr. Harvey, presented in recognition of your eight years of service and dedication in representing the citizens of Bossier City. As a city council member for Bossier City Council District 5, your contributions to the history of Bossier City will be felt for many years to come. Thank you, sir. Presented to Councilman Scott Irwin in recognition of your 17-plus years of service and dedication in representing the cities, citizens of Bossier City as city council member for Bossier City Council District 1, your contributions to the history of Bossier City will be felt for many years to come. Thank you, sir. All right, and to my fellow councilman-at-large, who I've served for 20 years together with, and there is a little story I've got to say about this. Back when I decided to run for at-large, Mr. DePrane retired, and I went to Tim, and he and his father were involved in politics for a long time, and I said, "Would you be my campaign manager?" And Mr. Larkin, he said, "Oh, absolutely, I'll look forward to that." Well, a couple of days and a weekend go by, and Mr. Larkin calls me on a Monday and he says, "Well, David, I got some bad news." And I'm like, "What could it be?" He said, "Well, I'm not going to be your campaign manager and I'm running against..." True story. Did I tell it correctly? I mean, actually, Mr. Larkin's word, we all ran for two seats, so I should take that back. But anyway, fortunately, at the time, both of us were elected. And I've enjoyed my years of service with my fellow-at-large member and feel as though we've made tremendous contributions, and his will certainly be felt for many years to come. Thank you.
Pretend you like each other.
For posterity?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir.
Well, that's awfully nice, thank you very much.
I think I can read that one without... Yeah, I can. Mayor? Could you join us? We have to think, was Carol here?
Carol is up in the balcony.
Have to thank Carol for getting involved with us. Mayor, you've certainly been a part of this city for a very long time and an integral part of the success in the past and the future. And I believe it's 16 years as mayor. And CAO, I can't... 16 as well, so... But in a total of dedicated service that Colonel Walker, Mayor Walker, has contributed, 35 years of public service to Bossier City. Thank you for your service in leading our city with class and distinction beyond none. And we present you this plaque on behalf of Bossier City and the Bossier City Council.
Thank you very much, David.
Mayor, would you like to say just a couple of words?
Two, two words. No dirty words. I will be brief. I have enjoyed working with you gentlemen. I think we've got a lot of great things going for our city and our parish, and I expect that to continue. And we'll do, I know we'll all do our very best to continue a smooth transition to a new administration and council members because our citizens deserve it, and I know they're going to get it. So thank all of you for what you do.
Hey, hey, good.
Bids, witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P21-11 East Bank Fire Station.
Good afternoon, counsel. The engineer's estimate for this project was $2,674,900. We had one addendum listing the attendees of the pre-mandatory meeting, changes to the drawings, changes to the plumbing and electrical specs, list of prior products material approval, and questions and answers. The first bid is from Bogspool Contracting Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. Their bid bond is included, is for $3,024,000. That's 3,024,000, point, 00. The next one is from ELA Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. Their bid bond is included, is for $3,177,000. That's 3,177,000, point, 00. Next, we have Integrity, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. Their bid bond is included, is for $3,238,400. That's 3,238,400, point, 00. Next one is from Eminem Builders, Inc. They acknowledged their addendum. Their bid bond is included, is for $3,085,000. That's 3,085,000, point, 00. Next, we have McKenna's Brothers Construction. They acknowledged the addendum. Their bid bond is included, is for $2,986,000. 2,986,000, point, 00. Our last bid is from Testament Construction Service, LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. Their bid bond is included, is for $3,083,500. That's 3,083,500, point, 00. I ask that you take these bids under advisement.
I make a motion to take them under advisement. Second. Chief, Chief's not here, Bragg's not here.
He's not here this week.
Oh, do you remember what the, well, we'll get in that later. There, a bid from last time?
It was around 2.6.
I thought it was over 3.
Prices, yeah, prices have increased tremendously on that.
All right, any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 20-2070, 2316 Walnut Street Demo.
Counsel, y'all made a motion at the administrative court, May 11th, 2001, to demolish this structure as soon as legally possible. Our first bid is from Three Gen Construction, LLC. There was no addendums to this project, by the way. That amount is for $7,999. That's 7,999, point, 00. Our next bid is from Lathan Construction, LLC. Their bid bond is included, is for $12,000. 1,200,000, point, 00. Our last bid is from Redtail Contracting, LLC. Bid bond is included, is for $6,062. 6,062, point, 00. I ask that you approve the reading of the bids.
So move?
Second.
Any questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Unfinished business, adopted ordinance authorizing Lorenz Walker to execute the attached agreement with Artiman and Associates, Inc. and appropriating $262,750 from the Walter OBB Carriageway Fund for services to be provided in conjunction with said agreement. Final reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance authorizing an increase in the salary range of the assistant superintendent position in the Public Utilities Wastewater Treatment Division, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. Final reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance authorizing the hiring of a dispatcher for water and sewer maintenance division in Public Utilities. Final reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance authorizing the hiring of two additional traffic control technicians in the Traffic Engineering Division. Final reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance authorizing the sale of a 2006 Barrera Inferno pumper for $48,000 to the city of Shreveport. Final reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to repair damage to 4804 O'Keefe caused from the failure of the Bruce Street Pump Station at a cost of $50,000 to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Pro Concrete for completion of work. First and final reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $15,000 from the 2021 Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to install gates and bollards to secure the North Bossier Park at Brownlee at night. First reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to fund the purchase of a used wheel loader from the wastewater treatment division at a cost of $157,900 to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund. First reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve a change order, one for the Swan Lake Ballfield Restrooms, Clifford Almond, with an increase of $41,452 for a total contract price of $5,452. First reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance establishing the Tinsley Ditch Basin Relief Plan and appropriating $135,000 from the 2021 Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund for cleaning the ditch and determining right-of-way for acquisition of a maintenance easement. First reading?
So move? Excuse me, so move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Public hearing concerning an amendment to the fiscal year 2016 and 2017 action plans for community development block grant funds.
Afternoon, counsel.
Bob, welcome.
We're proposing to reprogram funds from about eight projects that they didn't spend the money during the year that they were funded and since they're public services. We need to go ahead and re, pre-program them. We're planning to reprogram them into lead-based paint mitigation line item. We have several jobs that need to be done in that areas. Any questions?
Is that what was refunded to $35,819?
Some of those jobs are pretty expensive, depends on the house and how much lead paints on it.
Any questions from the audience?
Close the public hearing?
We'll close the public hearing. Resolution?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bob.
Adopt a resolution adopting an amendment to the fiscal year 2016 and 2017 action plans for community development block grant funds. First and final reading?
So move?
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to rename Ann Scott Circle to Ann Scott Street. First and final reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a senior operator due to retirement and backfilling any position this may create for the Water Treatment Plant Division in Public Utilities. First and final reading?
So move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve the use of Bossier City Water and Sewer to serve Black Stag, a proposed development near a corner of Benton Road and Vanceville Road. First and final reading?
So move.
Second. Jimmy, does a, does a parish have water sewer right there? I thought they had it. Or water one of them, because I know they have it in front of, uh, Wimple.
No, we have, we have the water at Wimple.
I thought they, I mean, they were, I thought they was putting in some out there. About a year ago.
We got, uh, we have all the water and sewer there at Wimple.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve the use of Bossier City Water and Sewer to serve Kane's Land and Commercial Development. First and final reading?
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an accountant one position due to a termination in the accounting department, all within the existing budget. First and final reading?
So move.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution repealing and reenacting resolution number five of twenty twenty for the organization of the city council, providing rules for the council and otherwise providing with respect thereto. First and final reading?
So move.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve an amended meeting schedule for the remainder of twenty twenty-one.
So move.
Second. Phil, do you want to explain that?
Yes, sir. The, the motion that we just did for the resolution, reenacting resolution number five, is we deleted the items for the agenda meetings out of that resolution and any, uh, there were several paragraphs that, that agenda meetings were targeted in and stated in that. And so that resolution deleted all comments of an agenda meeting. The council, we're going to get rid of the count, the agenda, the agenda meetings and strictly have voting meetings. The city charter says that we must meet every, at least every other week. And so with the new meeting schedule, the agenda meetings are gone. And there's also the months that there are five Tuesdays in that month. We're going to have three meetings that month. And it's just going to be abbreviated. That last meeting will be abbreviated meeting, um, things that require one reading. Resolutions, ordinances that are up for final reading, or any emergency ordinances or things like that, that we can do in one reading so that it doesn't mess up any advertising. And Mr. Hall and I had spoke about this as well.
And even though we meet more often, we get paid the same.
Yes, sir.
For the record.
Yes, sir.
Did you amend that resolution?
Any questions from the audience?
Oh, is it not, sorry.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order for the Streetscape Improvements US Seventy-One Project with an increase of a hundred and five days.
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Monthly finance report, city finance department.
Good afternoon, counsel. You have before you the financials for the month ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The first page is the revenue report. We are currently running a hundred and nineteen percent to budget. Gaming revenue is doing extremely well for the second month in a row. Sales tax is also doing well, up forty-three point nine percent from May of twenty twenty. Um, as I stated last month, the month-to-month comparison is going to be off probably for the rest of the year due to the COVID shutdown from last year. So twenty twenty-one is obviously going to be much higher. Page two are the, is the expense report. We are currently running about ten percent under budget. The only thing that's notably over is the alternative fuel station, but so is the revenue. They are running at a hundred and twenty-nine percent. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. As previously mentioned, we are running forty-three point nine percent higher than this time last year. This also reflects the COVID shutdown, so the percentage is going to be higher and people are just out there spending money. Page four is the Manning Report. We are down one employee from prior month overall. We are down one in finance, city court, garage, traffic engineering, fire, and streets. We are up two in police, two in street sweeping, and one in animal control. The May count is six hundred and sixty-four and the twenty twenty-one budget is six hundred and ninety employees. Any questions?
We're going to, I spoke with Molly, Mr. Williams, and we're going to resurrect the original.
For next month, yes, sir.
Form for the employee reporting. Thank you.
Monthly project report, engineering department.
All right, a new phase.
Good afternoon, counsel. This will be our monthly engineering report going over the projects we got going on. As you can see, we're at a hundred and thirty-six million going on in design or construction. That's an increase of about four million. Uh, seventy-six million currently under construction, six in designer bid with nineteen actively in construction, and still around seven subdivisions and are nearing the construction phase. Uh, Carriageway Phase One, uh, we are essentially complete with this project. Uh, this was taken last Friday. Uh, you can see it's, uh, working nicely. We did have to add the bats right there on the southern side of the roundabout. The only thing we are waiting on to close this project out is, uh, the police storage gate, finalizing that and a couple of other odd ends. And then other than that, we'll have this project wrapped up and have a bow on it. Swan Lake Road, uh, they were finalizing the striping all the way down to Modica Lot. Uh, we did meet with DOTD last week. We're going to have some modifications to the striping in that area. So we'll be working on that. And then we should be having a final walkthrough with DOTD and the parish in the next couple of weeks. Uh, Melrose Drive, the, this is the extension all the way to Plantation Drive. They are at ninety-one percent complete. They are hoping to have this turned over in the next week or two. They're working on striping from the beginning of this project actually back to Airline Drive. Uh, that striping was very, very outdated. And while we had them there, getting them to go ahead and re-stripe that, that way we've got good striping all the way from Plantation all the way to Airline Drive. Citizens Bank Drive, uh, broke ground on this about a month and a half ago. Um, they're a little underpaced, about ten days behind, at forty-five percent complete, with fifty-three percent of the time elapsed. Uh, but I talked to the contractor this week. He, he expects to be done with this in the next two weeks. Uh, Coleman Street, the, this is the phase one end. As you can see, they're pretty much wrapped up with this end. They put up signs and barricades on the eastern portion of the project near Bossier High School. And they are shutting that down, getting ready to do phase two, trying to get that wrapped up prior to school coming back in session in August. Contractor feels pretty good that they'll be out of, out of there, assuming we can get last bit of utilities out of the way.
But are they going, is that going to be all concrete, the intersection right there? Is it salt?
I believe that.
I don't know if there's a manhole or something was sinking down in there? Are they going to redo all that?
I believe so. I'll double, I'll go back and double check, but I believe a lot of those intersections were supposed to be redone. Manhole's brought to grade, catch basin's added, but I'll, I'll double check it.
Can I forward that email you sent me to, uh?
Principal, yes, sir. Yeah, just to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on. Uh, Streetscape Phase One sidewalks going down. Uh, we got, they're at seventy-three percent complete with forty-four percent time elapsed. We did have a little bit of setback, uh, ran into some gas meters, some unforeseen, uh, utility conflicts. So did have a little bit of setback there. Uh, but that, that forty-four days ahead with the forty-four percent time elapsed does include the change order that was added today for the additional hundred and five days. Uh, Ball Field's out at Tinsley, uh, still pretty behind schedule, but it's been a pretty big mud pit out there. Hopefully, all the dry weather we're getting now, getting into summer, they can get out there and get finished. Uh, they're mobilizing a lot of crews out there, trying to get done, trying to get finished. Uh, starting to get the roof up on the main concession building in between all five fields. And, uh, hopefully, I think we got turf guys coming back in, into July, trying to get all that stuff finished and wrapped up. Cliffordon Park Restrooms, this was, anybody familiar with this area? That was the big red building. It was gone in a heartbeat and they're out there working this, uh, getting ready to pour footings, getting the, the foundation pour, getting it coming up. And, uh, this is going to be a, a nice attraction for, a nice addition for that part.
Is that one going to be handicap too? Handicap restroom?
No, sir, it will not, it won't be. Uh, just because of the location of it, they, we won't have sidewalks going up to the building. The inside of the building will be ADA accessible. But from my understanding is the.
And the handicap field was right there.
Yes, sir. Now, I mean, we, I, Mike and, Mike was here, but, uh, I, I can double check with Mike.
I'll talk to you tomorrow, though.
I may be misspeaking on that, but to my knowledge, it's the, it's grass all access around. Uh, PSC Light Projects, the Brookshire Grocery Arena, uh, we're still waiting on final items to be delivered. Uh, still have a backlog of the new, I think they're dimmer switches for the suites that are inside the facility. That is the only lights inside the facility that were not changed to LEDs. So once those are done, the entire arena will be converted to LEDs and should show tremendous cost savings in the utility line item. Citywide street improvements, uh, we opened bids on phase three and four at the last council meeting. We have awarded those two streets, those two street projects. Uh, phase three, I believe they're going to be looking to mobilize on Monday. Uh, phase four soon after that. Uh, here's a picture of phase, this was phase one. This is actually Jeter Street. Uh, this one's wrapped up and substantially complete. Phase two, we've got it under construction. And then, uh, phase three and four have been awarded with pre-construction meetings coming. Uh, we also have sidewalks being done there in the Central Park area, I believe, right now.
He's, I think he's moved on already.
As he, I believe he was supposed to wrap up and then he was moving to the next area. He's.
He'd come in and kick butt and he's.
Yeah, he, DBI is doing a good job of getting in, getting out. Uh, we had a little setback with the weather back in May, uh, which May was horrible when it came to weather. I think we had ten inches. Uh, it was like the thirteenth wettest May in decades. So, uh, and got some private development going on here. Uh, we got retreat number four up there at the top and Estates number four there at the bottom. Uh, those developers are blowing and going, trying to get those, uh, the infrastructure in so they can start building some additional houses. Projects out to bid are in design. We're still under design of phase two, Highway Seventy-One lighting. Uh, we had the, some of the final plans sent back, uh, getting approval on the last, uh, light fixture that they've submitted. Um, the Carriageway Pump Station, we have it on the agenda to be opened on July sixth. East Bank Fire Station was open today during council. Uh, we got our South Bossier Miscellaneous Capital Improvements. Uh, it's in design. I believe we're at sixty-five percent of the design documents complete, but I think we're actually a little bit further than that. That was as of about four weeks ago. Um, and then we have the early stages of a left turn lane on Seventy-One at the Golden Meadows subdivision going into the apartments. Uh, honorable mentions in traffic engineering, we got our update with Urban Systems last month. Uh, we're continuing coordination with the police jury and DOTD for left turn lane extensions at I-220 and Benton Road. Uh, we're also still working on the other stages of traffic centralization upgrades. I spoke with KCS this week. They are done with the bridge. They replay, they finished replacement of their bridge on June fifth. They are working on cleaning up, getting the road back to where it was, and then looking at scheduling a walkthrough with the city and with KCS. Uh, and they said about five or six weeks and they'll have Hamilton Road back open. And we'll get that back up and running. Uh, and then we got approval from DOTD this morning uh, for the installation of a left turn arrow coming south on Airline to go to Green Acres and Innovation Drive. They approved that this morning.
Wow, congratulations.
So in about forty-five days plus, we'll have, uh, we'll have that signal installed and we'll have it up and running. We need some time to look at traffic counts and stuff like that to, in order to modify the entire intersection. And then we'll have that light installed and it'll be up and running. And property standards, they're still responding to numerous complaints. I, I think their phone rings off the hook nonstop.
Y'all quit calling, y'all.
Any questions?
Roger, you can answer my calls, too.
Clinton, go back to Swan Lake Road.
Yes, sir.
You don't have to pull it up. Um, we're, we're looking at a couple of weeks, I think? Con's gone?
Yes, we're, uh, the contractor along with Beast, they're going to work on that re-striping of not only Modica Lot, but also Pete Modica Lot. Uh, Pete Modica comes kind of in like a skewed angle. We're going to look at redoing the striping to kind of get it to come at a T. Uh, but also we got a dedicated right turn lane going into Modica Lot Road. And we're trying to protect those drivers and make sure that they turn right and, and, uh, prevent them from going north and possibly having a collision. So we're redoing a little bit of striping there. And that was, that's in coordination with DOTD, Beast, and the contractor. And so they should have something submitted by the end of the week. And then we'll, uh, they're going to lay it out on the ground. We're going to go out there, get DOTD approval, city approval, and then they'll get that implemented. It shouldn't take long.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just the three guys leaving, man, it's, uh, you know, again, we, we never all agree on everything, but we all still walk out of here with those are the doorway friends and colleagues. And, uh, I appreciate what, what y'all have done the last twenty years and, uh, again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, bud.
Just, I'd like to echo the same thing to Mr. Harvey, Mr. Urban, Mr. Larkin. You know, we, we've done a lot over the years and you guys made your essential contribution to the city, to the citizens, and we couldn't have done it without you. Thank you so much for your service.
Well, thank you all. It's been a wonderful experience and very fulfilling to me. And, uh, I'll miss it and, uh, good memories. Thank you very much. Appreciate it to everyone.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I'd, I'd just like to thank everybody for their friendship and their, their cooperation over the last eighteen years. You know, I'm not from Bossier City. I don't have any relatives here. And, uh, it's just, uh, uh, an honor for the citizens to have elected me to serve and, and be able to help the city and, and hopefully solve problems. And I do appreciate I couldn't have done it without all you guys. I appreciate, I appreciate y'all's, y'all's friendship and cooperation.
And I would, I would be remiss not to mention Mayor Walker for his long-term dedication to the citizens of Bossier, his professionalism throughout the whole process of being, uh, the manager over at the Civic Center and then the CAO in the mayor's office of, Mayor DeMent, and then become mayor for these sixteen years. It's one thing I could always depend on Mr. Walker is to give us a good answer for things that we needed to solve in the city of Bossier. And we didn't always agree on every single item on the agenda, but I think in theory, we were in agreement that we want Bossier, wanted Bossier to be the best city in the nation. And I think his heart was in the right place to make that happen. And he was so dedicated to the citizen and to this, this city. So we thank you so much, Mr. Walker, and we bless you and ask that God give you great speed and, and health and wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Dory.
You got to find something to do with your time, all these years in military and the city and.
About this sixty-five years with booth county. About 65 years with Poot County.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would like to take just a second to say thank you to this city council and our clerk, Phillips McGraw. I'm proud to have served with you all, and thank you for your dedication to the betterment of Bossier City. I also want to thank my wife, who has supported me through these eight years. She's supported me through 20, over 27 years in the Air Force. And 14 years ago, I kind of shocked her and said I wanted to buy a UPS franchise after talking to a friend of mine, and, and she supported me with that. Well, I really shocked her with saying I was going to run for city council, but it's going to be nice. Now, I, I hope, and I'm sure she's going to support my full retirement, and we look forward to our next adventure together. So thank you all. Appreciate it. Vacation.
I would be remiss if I didn't bring up a man that I've worked with in my 20 years and certainly a mentor and someone that has been a vital part of this entire city for 42 years. And I don't know of anybody that has served that long to the, to this city, but my goodness, the stories are endless. His wisdom is unmatched. His uncanny ability just to handle himself, you know, like a general in battle on the field, ready to go, Mr. Jimmy Hall. And I'm going to ask everyone to stand and thank him for his service.
I can't, I can't leave my seat without also making a mention to Mr. Hall. When you have a legal ego mind like yours, how can we go wrong on the city council in this city? We, we have had the, we've been the benefactor of who you are and who you've been to all the citizens of Bossier City. We, we truly couldn't have done it without you. So, so we, we do appreciate your service, and we pray that God would give you all the desires of your heart as you go into your next adventure, your next venture in life.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Amen to all that.
Pam? Would you mind coming to the mic real quick? I mean, we certainly would like to thank you-
Thank you.
-for your dedication and service. I don't know how many years. So help me, I-
32.
32, so.
Damn.
She's been an integral part, I believe started out with special projects or-
No, I start off, I start off in community development, then moved to special projects.
Community development and then-
Film commission?
Film commission's on the side and CAO as well.
And then finishing up as CAO, and you've certainly been an integral part of this team. And we certainly couldn't accomplish the things that we have.
Thank you very much.
I know you've had a, a great deal of influence and time and helping recover money, which is, everyone appreciates. Certainly can't have enough of that, can we?
No, no. Need every dime we can get.
But I want to thank you for your service. And if there's anything we can do for you, you please let us know. Thank you.
Sincerely appreciate it.
I would like to say that we have one more special event this Friday at the animal control facility that we've just spent $1.5 million renovating. We're going to cut a ribbon on it. So everyone's invited there, and we'll partake in, partake of that and see the little puppies and little kittens.
All right. Thank you, Dylan. All right. Well, thank you all, all. It's been a wonderful meeting. We look forward to the new journey with some new folks coming in. So with that, I wish everyone a great week and I, I think 4th of July as well. I believe we meet July 6th. So let's all celebrate the birthday of America and remember what got us there and got us here. Have a great week, meeting adjourned.